Good evening, everyone. It's good to be back in a city council meeting. I've missed the last couple. I do apologize for that. We have a special treat tonight. We are going to have a local Brownie unit do the pledge of allegiance for us. And we have a flag up on the screen. It will be followed by an invocation from Jack Hooker of Village Park Bible Math Church. We get everybody to stand.
Go ahead and start, girls.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seriously. Your word declares the problems with the righteous are in authority. The people rejoice. Father, would you guide our nation to do that? Would you honor and please God, the God that created us and gave us this nation? Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to live, work, and worship in the community of Westfield. Those who have been given the challenge to lead our city need your help to lead us righteously and effectively. Your word declares in the Book of James, if any of you lack wisdom, let him ask of God, who gives to all liberally and without reproach, and it will be given to him. Please grant to our mayor and council members that Godlack wisdom, to make good decisions, the courage to stand for the citizens of Westfield, and humility to admit their limitations. Please protect and strengthen our first responders, who keep us safe and well. Most importantly, they will be guided by your providence, strengthened by your power, and filled with the love that flows from Calhoun. We ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Thank you. Appreciate that. President Tam, would you like to run the meeting, please?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. This evening, we have a special presentation this evening for our Brownie troop 2397, who are earning their democracy badge. I understand they voted earlier today on gingerbread houses, which is much better than voting on politics. So, thank you for doing that. It's also something I'm pretty familiar with, because my daughter sat in your chairs not too long ago. But wanted to recognize their two leaders, Andalosi, if I mispronounced that, which I'm sure I did, and Chelsea Markland as well. Do you have anything special to share with us this evening as we consider the mayor's budget? My daughter would say ice cream, probably. But, but no. We thank you very much for being here this evening. But also thank you for being great students and also being great for your mothers and fathers at home and hopefully your brothers and sisters as well. But thank you for being here this evening. We greatly appreciate it. Want to... Marlon, I can't see you that.
I'm here. Would you like me to call the roll?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much.
I'd be honored. Victor McCarty.
Here.
Patrick Tam.
Here.
Kurt Waninger.
Here.
John Dart.
Here.
Joe Deppner.
Here.
Noah Heron.
Here.
Chad Huff. We have a quorum.
Thank you. There's no changes to the agenda this evening. We have the approval of the minutes this evening from our October 14, 2024, meeting, assuming that everyone's had a chance to review those. We need a motion and a second this evening.
After reviewing the minutes of October 14, 2024, I make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Waniger, seconded by Councilor McCarty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. We also have the claim docket for this evening from October 28, 2024. We've been reviewed. We need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve claims docket for October 28.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Heron, seconded by Councilor Dart. Seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Do we have any residents that wish to address the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move... I believe the mayor has a proclamation this evening.
So, I'd like to read a quick proclamation. Whereas October 2024 marks the observance of Hindu heritage month, and whereas Hinduism is the third-largest religion in the world, with 1 million devotees worldwide and 4 million here in the United States, and whereas Hindu heritage, culture, and tradition serve as a source of inspiration, reflection, and contemplation of the millions of people who look to the teachings of Hinduism for guidance, and whereas our vibrant Hindu-American community has contributed tremendously to the mentality of the city of Westfield and the state of Indiana by enriching the lives of its citizens, and whereas during October 2024, the Hindu community across the state of Indiana and our great nation will collectively celebrate its heritage by focusing on its culture and the diverse spiritual traditions rooted in India. I therefore be of resolve that the city of Westfield, Indiana, recognizes and celebrates the observance of Hindu heritage month. Be it further resolved that the city of Westfield, Indiana, falls upon our citizens to recognize the importance of the Hindu-American community in our city and state and the many contributions they have made throughout our history. In witness whereof, hear of, I, Scott A. Willis, have hereunto set my hand and caused to be fixed the great seal of the city of Westfield, Indiana, on this 28th day of October.
Moving on to our old business this evening. Our first order of business under old business is ordinance 2449, which is the 2025 budget being presented by Mayor Willis.
Thank you, President Tam. I appreciate it. For those of you in the room who may have been here for our first presentation, we've spent the last couple of months going line by line through the budget with the council, helping them understand how we came to the numbers we came to. A lot of thoughtful dialogue back and forth that I certainly appreciate. In particular, Councilor Dart and Councilor Heron, they played a lead role for the council in diving into the numbers and offering up some minor tweaks to the budget. It's my first budget. And I will say, based on my experience from past years on council, this was a pretty painless and collaborative process. And I appreciate the council for their guidance during this time period. Next slide, please. So, what I'm going to cover here just real quickly is the changes that have been made to the budget from what was originally presented back several weeks ago. And again, this stuff is online if you want to go through it in detail. We made a few minor adjustments. First off, in administration, we had some adjustments to the benefits. FICA, PERF in particular, with just numbers adjustments based on some changes of assumptions. We have one employee that was left off in tuition reimbursement. We have an employee benefits program that includes tuition reimbursement if it benefits the city. And we had forgotten one of the employees was getting an MBA, so that had to be added in. The clerk treasurer was gracious enough to reduce her budget by $200,000 in consulting fees. That was primarily just a revisit of the scope and deciding that we could reduce that down accordingly. Also, we've added into the clerk treasurer's budget a stipend of $10,000. That's really for education and training. We're set up in our city where if you get certain certifications that benefit your job, there's a stipend, a one-time stipend that comes with that. Under community development, I think the Neighborhood Vibrancy Grant Program was wildly received by the council, so much so, they wanted to see us increase the budget. We had set $100,000. They wanted to bump that up to $240,000. We were absolutely happy to do so. I think that's a great start to get this program off and running. So, that budget was increased accordingly. And then also, in the police department, we wanted to add some speed monitors to the city. And to do that, we needed to do some equipment purchasing, and that was an increase of $20,000. So, that is basically the breakdown of how things have changed in our budget. Just a reminder that this is a zero-based budget. So, for every dollar that was moved, another dollar was adjusted accordingly. So, I'm happy to say the budget is balanced, and I'm excited about what it's going to deliver. Next slide. This will be what you will see out on social media and on the city website in the days to come. This is kind of a one-page document we created for our residents to understand the basics of what was done in this budget. Let me just highlight some things real quickly. Again, it is a balanced budget. We are keeping the tax rate flat. It is not going up in 2025. The total civil city budget is $124,630,000 roughly, with an operational budget of roughly $78, 78.5 million. That excludes bond payments. Also, I can't see that bottom part, but our cash reserves are still very, very strong. Our cash reserves are better than any city in Hamilton County, and my gut tells me probably in the state of Indiana. We're sitting at 56% of our budget is in cash reserves. So, I think we're set up well for success. We know we have some fixed costs coming with public safety. So, we want to make sure that we keep those reserves close for future investments. On the public safety side, some things you're going to see in this budget. Again, we're hiring additional personnel to both fire and police. They're both growing quite a bit, especially the fire department with the new Station 84. We will be opening Westfield Fire Station 84, hopefully in 2025 if everything goes well. We're also in the middle of designing and constructing a new police department headquarters. And we're also investing in some additional mental health initiatives for our public safety personnel. Roads and infrastructure, you're going to see $42 million invested in road resurfacing projects. I think that might be a record for the city of Westfield, more than the last three years combined. We're funding for the design and construction of 191st Street widening. I know we've gotten a lot of complaints and concerns from residents up on the north side of the city, and this project will go a long way in addressing that. And then we'll be funding again for a new community initiative called the Neighborhood Grant Program. Really excited about that. It'll be grant dollars that HOAs and neighborhoods can apply for it with a matching component from the neighborhood that will allow them to invest in beautification projects in their neighborhood. We want to make sure that Westfield stays looking new even when we're not so new in the future. Economic development, we're investing in downtime parking garages. There'll be two of them that come out of this budget, or at least a portion of it. Funding a Grand Park Master Plan that we're, quite frankly, at the back end of, and hopefully we'll have that, whoa, have that live here early next year. And then also, we're going to be working on creating a marketing package to promote economic development. Believe it or not, when we go after companies and new projects in our city, I got nothing to send them other than we're a great place to live and you should come here. So, we're trying to professionalize our economic development program, and we're establishing a marketing package that will include videos and hard copying materials that I think will go a long way in selling our city. And lastly, Quality Alive continued funding for our popular community events through Westfield Welcome, funding for completion of Simon Moon Park Phase 2, constructing the permanent restrooms at Freedom Trail Park, long overdue, and investment for Park Street Streetscapes Project, which will help to beautify our vision for what we're going to do in the downtown area. And I think that pretty much sums it up.
Thank you, Mayor. Any conversation from the council this evening? Discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to thank you and your staff. I know you probably would have liked this budget approved a couple of weeks ago, but giving us the time to go through it more thoroughly and detailed and all the council's input of going through and working with us to add some items and reduce some items as well. So, I do appreciate that. I look ahead to the projects that are going to be done and investing in our community, especially our fire, police, our roads, as you saw there, and then our parks. And I agree with you that bathroom at Freedom Trail is... Park is way overdue. So, hopefully that'll be a nice amenity for the public. And also, glad we're investing in our employees and continue to invest in our employees with the city of Westfield and the mental health of our community. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I appreciate the comments, Councilor Waniger. I had a few calls on why it was taking so long. Folks, everybody up here on this stage is brand-new in their jobs. And we wanted to make sure that we showed grace to each other, quite frankly, and everybody felt comfortable voting on this budget, whether it's a yes or a no. I didn't want anybody coming here with questions. So, we took a little extra time. I expect in future years, it'll probably be a little bit quicker. But if it isn't, it isn't. At the end of the day, we're coming in an appropriate amount of time to get this filed. And I think everybody up here feels like they're confident in what we're doing. Whether they like it or not, I'll let each counselor speak for themselves, but I do feel like everybody is well-informed about where we're heading.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you for that. The budget is a flat tax rate. We're the 10th lowest, as we went into this process, 10th lowest municipal tax rate in the entire state. We're the sixth fastest-growing community in the entire country. We're the only city in the top 100 in the Midwest, and we've maintained a municipal flat tax rate. With that, we do have a 56% reserves, which for those of you doing kitchen-table math, that sounds fantastic. When we deal with the Department of Local Government Finance, they do not like that, which is not a popular thing to say. But I just want to make sure people do understand that we are keeping tax dollars, hard-earned tax dollars, and not putting that to work. At the same time, it is prudent with the amount of growth that we have to also preserve those dollars. At this... The other piece that the mayor did talk about, this year, this upcoming budget year, you're going to see more road construction in the city of Westfield than the last three years combined. Think about that for a second. We've kicked the can way too often and way too long. We've also ensured that our projects cost way too much when we didn't do things when we should have been doing them. Plain and simple. At the same time, I'm very glad that we took care of some of our employees. This city does not run on its own. We have men and women in the back that work very hard for us and have done so, in some cases, for their entire career. And we are greatly appreciative of that, and frankly, we'd like to do more. With that, though, Councilor Dart and Councilor Heron truly took a lead on a lot of these efforts of trying to make sure that we had a zero-based budgeting process, at the same time, trying to also ensure that interests for the community, interests that are divergent are also listened to. It did take us some time. We also had a very much changed environment. We have departments today that didn't exist last year. We have people and places that we didn't have. We have an economic development department that actually has more than one person. We have new leadership in our public safety. At the same time, we also have new public safety needs that we know we need to address and continue to grow to address those. But I just want to make sure, though, that folks understand that there's a collaborative process. We may disagree a lot privately. We may say a lot of things to each other when we question, why is this this way? Or why is it that way? All of it is done in the spirit of trying to make sure the taxpayer is properly protected and frankly, respected, most importantly. So, with that, I do appreciate... I want to take sincerely, take a moment, though, to thank Councilor Dart and Councilor Heron for their leadership and really attention to detail, but also your team, Mayor. Frankly, all your department heads had to rework their numbers. We've assigned health benefits in different categories. We've also put things in different places. It was harder to do what Councilor Dart wanted to do, which was, hey, where were we last year versus this year? I loved being in between both of you when you were both arguing that. But at the same time, it was always done in a respectful manner, which I greatly appreciate. Thank you. Any other conversation this evening? Seeing none, may we call the roll? Oh, excuse me. We need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2449, the 2025 budget.
I'll second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Heron, seconded by Councilor McCarty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll now?
John Dart.
Yes. Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
We have a budget. It's passed 6-0.
Still got to pass a salary ordinance, though. The next order of business is ordinance 2452, which is a non-elected 2025 salary ordinance. Will be presented by Ms. Tolan.
Good evening, council members. For the record, Danielle Perry Tolan, Deputy Mayor, here with the city of Westfield. Before you is the 2025 salary ordinance for the non-elected officials. Nothing has changed prior to last meeting to this meeting. This is the max, a bi-weekly salary that is in front of you for each category. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those.
Do we have any questions this evening? Seeing none, we need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2452, non-elected 2025 salary ordinance. Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Waniger, seconded by Councilor Dart. Any further conversation? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next matter of business is ordinance 2453, which is the elected officials 2025 salary ordinance. And it'll be presented by Clerk Treasurer, Ms. Hayler.
So, again, like the non-elected salary, this ordinance really hasn't changed since, I believe, it was introduced. However, a previous version I accidentally had attached, so that was corrected today. It included lowering the clerk treasurer's vehicle allowance, removal of mayor's stipend, which wouldn't be allowed. Those were my errors. Apologies to you. You should have the corrected version in front of you. Other than that, there are no other changes to benefits or anything else. Let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions this evening? Seeing none, we need a motion and a second.
A motion to approve ordinance 24-53, elected official salary ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Dart, seconded by Councilor McCarty. Seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next order of business is ordinance 2660, which is the common counsel of the city of Westfield, Indiana, approving the second addendum to the 2024 lease and reaffirming pledge of general revenue to the 2024 lease rental payments. We had a presentation by Mr. Starnes at the previous council meeting. I believe he's online this evening. If there's any other additional questions. Caitlin, just real quick. I know there was some questions about numbering and so forth.
Yeah, so Cam is online. I think there was a sound issue, but now it seems like maybe that was him, and the sound issue is resolved. If you guys have questions, if he can't hear, I'll be happy to do the best I can to answer those. Just quickly, before you consider them, the first one, 2460, you see a red-line version. That is not changing anything substantive. If you open it, it's truly a typo. The same number was kind of repeated twice accidentally and incorrectly. So, that's not a substantive change, but we wanted to make sure you all knew that. The next two, 2461, if you look at the agenda item, it mentions 2016 and then 2018 lease rental payments. If you open that document, it's actually only referring to 2018. Similarly, the next one, 2462, it mentions 2018 lease, 2016 lease rental payments. If you open 2462, it's only referring to 2016. So, nothing substantive, no changes. I just wanted that on the record as you all consider these.
So, everyone understand that we had a little flip-flop of numbers? Okay. With that, if there's no question, further questions, we need a motion and a second for ordinance 2460.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2460, reaffirming pledge of general revenue to the 2024 lease rental payments.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Waniger, seconded by Councilor McCarty. Seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Waninger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Heron.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
We have ordinance 2461, which is the common counsel of the city of Westfield, Indiana, approving the second addendum to the, can I say, 2018? And reaffirming the pledge... Yeah. And reaffirming the pledge of local income tax to the 2018 lease rental payments. Same situation here. Same situation here. Do we have a motion in a second?
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four sixty-one for the twenty-eighteen lease and reaffirming pledge of the lit, to the twenty-eighteen lease rental payments.
Second.
I'm going with experience over youth here. A motion made by Councilor Waniger, seconded by Councilor Dart. No offense, you beat them last time, I think. I, I ruled one of them.
I'm just ready to keep this show on the road.
Guys are giving me like swimming, swimming flash seconds. The, do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you. We have ordinance twenty-four sixty-two, which is the common counsel of the city of Westfield, Indiana, approving the second addendum to the twenty-sixteen lease and reaffirming the pledge of the local income tax to twenty-sixteen lease rental payments. Do we have a motion in a second?
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-four six, twenty-four day sixty-two, twenty-sixteen lease and reaffirming pledge of the lit to the twenty-sixteen lease rental payments.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Waniger, seconded by Councilor McCarty. Seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Kurt Waniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Motion carries six-zero.
Thank you. Moving on to new business this evening, we have ordinance twenty-four sixty-four, which is the Ambrose on Main. We have Ms. Gilling, Gillingham Teague this evening to present, and I believe we have the petitioner also in the room as well this evening.
Good evening. Different place. For the record, Lauren Gillingham Teague with the Community Development Department. Item before you tonight is the introduction for, for the proposed Ambrose on Main PUD district located in the northeast corner of thirty-two.
Lauren, I'm sorry, I can't hear a word you're saying from here.
The mic's not really on. The light is on.
It's for people overhead to hear you.
Okay.
But I can't hear you.
I'm just gonna yell. Okay.
Go.
Do you want me to start over?
I know who you are, so I got that far.
Cool, let's get that. Okay, so the item before you tonight is the introduction. Is that, is that a good volume?
Yes.
Perfect.
Cool. Thank you for bearing with me. Item before you tonight is the introduction for the proposed Ambrose on Main PUD district. This is at the northeast corner of thirty-two and northeast street. This is a four-story, eighty-eight-unit mixed-use residential building with commercial storefronts running on thirty-two. I don't know if we can pull up my exhibits. Yes, that's the one I'm going for. That one works too. So similar to other multifamily PUDs, this development will be tied to the site plan pictured here. The landscape plan and architectural elevations, and if approved, must be developed in substantial compliance with these exhibits. This petition is scheduled for public hearing at the November sixth APC meeting. And then a neighborhood meeting will be held tomorrow at six p.m., probably right here in this room. The petitioner plans to make a brief presentation. I'll turn it over to him. Thank you.
Good evening, Shelby. If you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Yes, sir. My name's Shelby Bowen. I'm partner at Rebar Development. Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to present this ordinance for the Ambrose on Main PUD. Mayor, appreciate your support and guidance thus far. Your staff has been very collaborative, professional, responsive, and they've made the project better from when we filed and showed them the concept plans, including over the last three weeks in anticipation of our kind of final development proposal. I joke around, they've made it better and more expensive, but you know, that's all a good thing for everybody. So really excited to present to you kind of high level and then, of course, take questions on any of the detail. Ambrose on Main is going to be on the, the corner, northeast corner of State Road thirty-two and East Street. Rebar Development, this is right in our wheelhouse. This is what we do. Let's see if we can advance so you can see the team, which is important. A hundred percent of the projects that we have done are public-private partnerships. We are requesting the city's partnership and support here, and I think it's important to highlight that we have been a partner with many communities in central Indiana, and we've followed through. And I'm really proud of what we've built. This would be our thirteenth project in the last five years, all here in central Indiana, all some form of public-private partnerships. We're lucky to have a best-in-class design team. I can stay out of their way, let them collaborate with, I think we collaborate with your engineering, planning, economic development, and of course, input from other stakeholders on how we can make the project better. And I'm really proud of what we presented tonight. So here's generally the, the floor plans for the building. Go ahead and advance, because I think we're gonna just go, keep going. This was, it looks like it's jumped ahead. So I wanted to see the site first and the location on this presi. There we go. Let's see if we can go. There you go. That way we can kind of see. You might just toggle. Perfect. And you can go back through if you're able to. Sorry about the technical difficulties. I think we're kind of accustomed to this. But northeast corner of State Road thirty-two, what really appealed to me when I came, we've been looking to invest in downtown Westfield probably since two thousand fifteen sixteen and really just couldn't find the right fit and right timing. And when the mayor stepped into office, of course, was interested in engaging the development sector, and we were, we were ready to go and looking, and he pointed me to this site. And the more I learned about the roundabout and what was happening and thought that we would really have an opportunity. I like projects that really kind of become a statement and an anchor in downtown redevelopment, and I love what this can do for the gateway coming from the east. As you get to downtown, we've really focused on what is that gonna look and feel like on this corner and this roundabout. So we're excited to be a part of this really transformational roundabout. You could go ahead and advance if you're able to. I think if you just hit the arrows, it should down at the bottom. Yeah, you could just keep. Perfect. There you go. So twenty-seven million plus investment, twelve thousand, this is increased some, twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-three square feet of commercial space. It'll be a mix of restaurant, probably office and other retail. What I think is compelling about this for our commercial users is we've got great parking, surface parking right next to our commercial space, good access, and so I'm excited about that, but still have all the great visibility and location. So we're already hearing from users. I would expect that this will be a good addition to this corridor in this neighborhood. Eighty-eight residential units, really cool rooftop patio. We actually have six outdoors distinct patio areas around the project, which we can look at when we look at the site plan. And of course, I talked about the parking. The other thing that I'm excited about, even though it's really, it's, it's certainly a benefit to our project, but extending Penn Street, which I thought was a fantastic idea when the city encouraged us to maybe include and look at that. And thanks to their support, we're collaborating with engineering in the city to make that possible. Go ahead, please. So this really, when we're thinking about why, when we come to the mayor and you all for your support, like how can this project benefit Westfield, and you know, I really had to just pick the highlights. I think it has many benefits, especially as our plan continued to evolve, to really think about the future of that entire development corridor and how we can engage folks. Stuff as simple as accommodation of golf carts, pedestrian connections that come from the north, not just from thirty-two, adding a breezeway through the building so folks can come through directly to our project out to thirty-two and further downtown. Thank you. Here's the proposed timeline. Of course, if we get through the PUD to your satisfaction and planned commission, we'll be back in front of you all requesting your support. I believe that's January. We'll be ready to go. We've got the land under contract and hope to purchase the land by the end of this year, probably even prior to presenting the project, and we'll be ready with design and hopefully your support, because we'd like to get started as soon as we can in the spring. And it would probably complete construction in summer, fall of twenty-twenty-six. Okay, if you could go to, I think it's Exhibit A, but it's the site plan, which we looked at. It's an exhibit. Again, this collaboration from planning has improved the project, including, you know, just, just things as simple as, you know, the landscape architecture plan and plantings. So what you see in the green space off of Hillcrest and thirty-two, that's actually floodway, so we can't develop there. But we're gonna make sure it's, it's really a, gonna end up being a bonus to have that much green space. What's really on an urban project, mixed-use, high, high to medium density, the fact that our folks are gonna really be, be able to enjoy that much green space is, is an amenity. You can see the, the various patio areas. That was, again, collaboration with the city to say, how can we engage this project from all sides, not just have a front of the building and then kind of ignore the back? And something as simple, I'm gonna point out here, the, the pedestrian path that comes from the north that was added. Down to thirty-two and hit the path and head either way downtown. So just a really cool addition from our work with your planning and economic development, folks. Okay, we could go to the next exhibits of the renderings, which we've seen. Go ahead and go to the renderings. I will say here, again, the city pushed us. This is really cast stone, masonry, some other alternative materials, but not many. And if you look at the products we have delivered that are in important areas for municipalities, I'm really proud of how our projects look. I would encourage you to go to our website and check out other projects. And it's really what we're trying to accomplish is really timeless, elevated, high quality, and something that is a good reflection on us, so people want to come and live and work and visit, but also you all as our partners, and I think we're accomplishing that here. Of course, the importance of the roundabout and what can we do to really create a focal point there and a statement. We worked hard with your team and your third-party architectural consultants, and I love what we've done here. I think if you go to the renderings, maybe down the sheet some, if you scroll. I think, keep going. I think they're down. So here, just really cool, that's cast stone and masonry and just really high quality, substantial. A lot of outdoor space, not only at street level, but what we have, if you go back up just to see the other. Up top on the corner, that's a rooftop patio. It's a super cool amenity. We'll have a work-from-home center up there that will be indoor/outdoor, and that'll just be a fantastic area and really provide some interest, hopefully for people to go, oh, that's cool, you know, what's going on up there? And kind of engage what's happening in downtown. And truthfully, I really like that view down to the south and even looking downtown. So I'm excited as that takes shape. And then finally, this is also the east gateway, adding, there, there's some topography, so we had to work through that, but we didn't want to close it off. We really wanted to make it look like it's someplace you want to go check out and be a part of. You can see the steps and ramps, so you'll be able to get to that commercial space from thirty-two, the path along thirty-two, both through steps, paths, pedestrian, and we just want people to feel like it's a part of downtown. And that's not always easy to achieve when you have a state road coming through, but I'm, I'm excited about that. But then maintaining great buffers. This is where the city and planning and economic development really pushed hard to make sure that we created a really great landscaping, architecture, et cetera. So I think that this is gonna be a cool addition. And then the last exhibit is the landscape architecture plan as required by you P, by your PUD. Again, pretty robust here, but that'll be a good thing. This will all be irrigated. If you go look at other projects, we take good care of this stuff. It looks great. And this will be a great reflection on the city of Westfield and downtown as you come in from the east. Sorry, that was a lot, but I wanted to kind of get it all out there at our first presentation to you all, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Mr. Bowen, thank you very much for that robust presentation, but as you know, it's a great gateway for us. So I think you gave it the appropriate conversation as well. Is there any conversation or discussion this evening? Councilor Dart?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So can you talk about the buffer on each side, primarily on the north side? You've got residents. I don't know how many residents are impacted by this development, but what is, what is Rebar planning to ensure that, you know, the people that live around this project are, you know, have the same quality of life that they had prior to the project?
Yeah, great question. First of all, for us, there are no owner-occupied acquisitions, with the exception of maybe the far northeast corner, a part of the Penn Street extension. But the properties we currently have are either vacant or investment properties today. So I was happy that we weren't trying to knock on doors. That's like, you know, at the Academy Awards when the guy in the back flashes the light. Yeah. So this is interesting downtown project, because we're lucky, in a sense, that we have surface parking, which certainly reduces the cost for these projects. And really, it creates a buffer. As much as we wouldn't want this much parking if we were trying to do true urban infill, the flip side is we were fortunate enough, we had the land to do it this way, bring the buildings up to the street so they don't feel like they're on top of the folks who live on Hillcrest and to the north. And so I think there's a fair amount of buffer between what would be people living three and four stories on the north side and their balconies, gonna have a hard time really feeling like they're looking down at you here. So I think that was really the true buffer for us is not really imposing on the neighbors in that way.
How about, how about lighting? I mean, that's a big parking lot, two hundred and sixteen spots. Any concerns with lighting and the impact to the area?
Yeah, so for us, same thing. So I also think about the folks who live in our building. And so our lighting, per the city of Westfield's requirements, will be the gooseneck downlighting. There'll be some light pollution, but really, it's all designed for safety and pedestrian and vehicle access in and out of our property. I wouldn't anticipate. And then when we do soft lighting on the building, there are just sconces that are patio sconces, but there's no projecting light that goes in light pollution up towards or out. But there'll be downlighting to, to light the parking lot.
And then one more, if I don't, if you don't mind. You've got your walkway going from north to south, right? The walkway goes through to State Road thirty-two. Yep. I don't know if you can answer this, but maybe this, what is the city considering from a crosswalk standpoint? Is there any crosswalk, where would the crosswalk be to get across thirty-two if you wanted to go over to the brewery or somewhere else? Or is it all at the roundabout? What's being considered for pedestrian safety?
I love that question, and I hope that the city of Westfield and engineering, that we can collaborate somehow. I think there are examples in Hamilton County where it's done well in a busy area. And I, I hope we can invest in that along with the state and maybe the city. Currently, there are no plans as a part of our project, but I want downtown to feel safe. I want these folks to feel like they can go to Field, they can come to Park Street. And so I, I am, I'm with you, whatever we can do as a partner to accomplish that, I would love to invest in that.
Sounds like a tunnel.
Yeah, and just so, Councilor Dart, to answer your question, as we looked at the widening of State Road thirty-two, there are crosswalks. I don't know exactly where in relation to that breezeway, but we can get that answer for you.
Yeah, just jumping in, I was about to say it's a similar thing, that it'll probably be worked into our agreement with NDA in the reconstruction of State Road thirty-two, since the city is contributing funds to beautify the area. Crosswalks are taken into account with that as well.
Yeah, I think there's the balance between like the raised, crosswalks are great for pedestrians, maybe not so, so great for traffic flow, and so what is the right way to allow pedestrians to feel safe? I hope we can accomplish that.
My last question is, you talked about the extension of Penn Street, which would run east. Does that go all the way through then to?
To Hillcrest.
To Hillcrest.
Yeah, and I think, and I agree, the opportunity, I love to continue to grow, if it makes sense. And so in anticipation of that, and just really to enhance our project, to show real development occurring, and this, to me, is a beautiful opportunity, because Penn Street to East Street is awesome. And so for us to have the opportunity to extend that really feels like it's a part of our project. Great overflow parking for us, and so it's a home run for us, and then the city agreed to do that. It's fantastic.
And John, just to answer your question, so Penn Street on the city's thoroughfare plan has always, the plan was always to extend Penn Street to the east. Obviously, we're just beginning the stages of a, of a revisit, of a, of a design for our downtown, a revitalization of our downtown. So we wanted that to connect into it, to fit the thoroughfare plan because of the land he was accumulating. We had this opportunity. Where Penn Street goes long-term, too early to say. But I do believe it gives the residents of Hillcrest a way to get to East Street without having to try to navigate onto State Road thirty-two with all the roundabouts coming. It's just gonna be even more difficult for them. So regardless of that area, if we continue to, to develop east long-term, it's a great option for the residents to get out of downtown without navigating through State Road thirty-two.
Yeah, I've never traveled on Hillcrest. I would assume it's same width, kind of same parameters as, as, as East Street. But if it's not, you know, what's the potential future impact of Hillcrest with traffic coming across on Penn? Or, or trying to go north on Hillcrest and come over to the, the complex here? I just wonder if the, the city's considering something to do on Hillcrest as well.
So Hillcrest is a U-shaped neighborhood. It literally just does this, and there's homes on both sides. It is probably the worst road in the city of Westfield, quite frankly. It's embarrassing that the city has neglected that neighborhood for far too long. When this project is done, the city's committed to improving the roads and, and making it a much better experience for those neighbors. I don't anticipate widening Hillcrest to Penn Street level width, simply because it's a neighborhood and it would require road and front road or front yard acquisition that we don't think is gonna be popular or we want to do. And we'll wait and see what happens with that neighborhood long-term. But for now, I, I don't. But for now, I don't anticipate anything changing other than taking the opportunity while this road is being done and repaving and improving the entire roadway of that neighborhood.
Yeah, and I'll say one addition from the city that we just kind of overlooked as a team is you'll notice here that there are sidewalks in all sides, including a sidewalk now on Hillcrest that does not exist today. And so I just think it's a really cool improvement for the folks who live in that northeast corridor that wanna come and see what's happening by bike or foot. So really fantastic pedestrian engagement and mobility here in this project.
You touched on the rooftop patio, but what was the intent of that? Again, what's the primary purpose?
Well, it's mostly cool, our residents, we've done it in other projects. And here, you know, I love the views down to the south. And for our residents to be able to have a really cool private patio where they can come out and enjoy the weather or work on their laptops has just been a wonderful amenity. And there are already, as you can see, Old Town's project is awesome, and there's more on the way. So we're just trying to make sure we develop with that in mind. We want this to be a great place to live.
You talked about retail on the lower level as well. I'm sure you can't mention names of companies you're looking to partner with, but restaurants, coffee shops, clothing shops, what's the vision?
Yeah, right now, I think the mix, what we're trying to do is get a mix that doesn't burden the parking all at the same time. So ideally, we'd have an office user maybe in a portion of it that's there and got folks who are gonna be downtown and eat downtown, but leave nights and weekends. And then on the end cap, the east end cap is designed for a restaurant and outdoor seating. So I imagine we'll have a restaurant on the end cap. And then we've had all varieties of inquiries, surprisingly, because we don't even have it out to the markets yet. But we're getting calls about anything from medical to other commercial uses, really all over the map. We're gonna be hopefully selective and focused to make, if we can get the right mix of uses that also serve as amenities or bring additional vibrancy to the project, that's our goal.
Seeing no other questions this evening, Mr. Bone. I greatly appreciate your work with us and I look forward to seeing what we come forward with the APC. Thank you. Next order of business is ordinance twenty-four sixty-five, which is a Maple Knoll PUD amendment. Mr. Collingwood.
All right, so thank you, President, members of the council. Good evening. For the record, Ryan Collingwood with the Community Development Department. The item presented before you tonight is a proposed amendment to the Maple Knoll Planning and Development District, in which was originally established back in two thousand and four as ordinance oh-four oh-two. The subject parcel is approximately thirty-four point three acres in size and currently holds the Maple Glen Elementary School and existing transportation center as seen within the provided vicinity map exhibit. The amendment proposal is to consolidate various school functions on the property. The proposed ordinance would allow the schools to expand and renovate the existing transportation building on site, as well as construct a new freestanding building on the property to help combine school resources. Matt Skellon of Church, Churchill and Antrim is present this evening for first reading, and he does plan on making a very brief presentation.
The time is now seven fifty-five p.m. The library will be closing in five minutes. Thank you.
That was really just for Matt.
Something else to note, public hearing for this petition will be at the APC's November sixth meeting. I'll turn it over to Matt now, thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. For the record, Matt Skellon with Church, Churchill and Antrim with offices at one sixteen North Union Street here in Westfield. With me this evening is Assistant Superintendent Brian Tomo-Michael with Westfield Washington Schools. And I think Ryan summarized pretty well. I'll just add a couple of points and, oh, thank you, Christopher. I think this exhibit is probably just a little bit easier to read. It clearly points out... This is the proposed new addition to the existing facility. And then the proposed new building is reflected there. This is designed to consolidate certain school functions, specifically the grounds facilities and also the Operations Service Center, which are in separate locations today. And this will allow that consolidation and some economies of scale, of course. The, there's also, I think there's a rendering, Christopher, that was recently completed, that's the next page, yeah. That gives a better indication of what the addition will look like that will be seen from Ditch Road. And additionally, on the concept plan, there is, if you could go back, yeah, the other one, yeah. Sorry. That page one, page one of that rendering that we had up, the previous page, sorry. But the schools have been thoughtful in designing the site. There's approximately along the east property line that abuts a neighborhood. There is a, today, there's about a forty-foot green strip there that is, it's open, it's grass. There's some landscaping in it, not a lot, but an additional forty feet. So there'll be an eighty-foot buffer space doubling that green area, that setback area. And in that area, a four-to-five-foot mound is planned, along with some fairly significant landscaping that's gonna provide a nice transition, a nicer transition and some additional setback for the neighborhoods. The, we will be hosting a neighbor meeting tomorrow evening. I think most of you received that invitation. You're certainly welcome to attend. It's at six-thirty p.m. at the actual bus transportation facility on Ditch Road. So you're welcome. We look forward to working with you and the city staff. We thank you for your consideration, and we're happy to respond to any questions if you have any.
Any questions this evening from Mr. Skellon?
Matt, what's the overall cost of these improvements?
I can get that answer for you, but I don't know it right now.
Is the petitioner here that could answer that question?
Tom Michael's using hand signs.
Brian Tomo-Michael.
Brian Tomo-Michael, Westfield Washington Schools. We plan to invest about seventeen million total into the site.
Seeing no other questions, thank you this evening, and I look forward to seeing you shortly.
Thank you.
The next ordinance on our agenda this evening is ordinance twenty-four sixty-six, which is the Lions Team PUD amendment. Mr. Collingwood.
I'm already here. Thanks, President, members of the council. Again, for the record, Ryan Collingwood with the Community Development Department. The item presented before you this evening is a proposed amendment to the Lions Team Planning and Development District, in which was originally approved in two thousand and eighteen as ordinance eighteen dash eleven. The subject parcel is approximately zero point one acres in size and can be seen in more context within the provided location map exhibit. The amendment proposal is to allow religious and church uses respectively onto the property. The original Lions Team PUD established only office uses to be permitted originally. This item is in front of you for its first reading tonight, and a public hearing is scheduled to follow at the APC's November sixth meeting. The petitioner is not here this evening, but I am happy to answer any questions that I am aware of. Thank you.
I probably can't.
The time is eight p.m. The Westfield Washington Public Library is now closed. Have a nice evening.
Our meeting's not quite over, but thank you. Any questions this evening? I see none, thank you, Ryan. We have introduction of ordinance twenty-four sixty-seven. The common council of the city of Westfield, Indiana regulating mobile food vehicles and mobile food vendors within the city in repealing and replacing. Ordinance fourteen oh-six and ordinance seventeen twelve. This evening, we have Ms. Gilliam-Ham Teague to make a presentation.
Thank you. For the record, Lauren Gilliam-Ham Teague. The item for you tonight is the first reading of the proposed mobile food vendor, Mobile Food Vehicle Business License Ordinance. This will be required for all mobile food vendors looking to operate within Washington Township in the city of Westfield. This license, which will be administered by Community Development, basically just verifies important details that are not covered by the health department's permit and inspection process. These are things like whether the vehicle's registered, the operator is a licensed driver, they pay the proper taxes, hold insurance, those kind of things that aren't directly related to the health department's purview. And it also gives the city some clearer recourse for operators found to be in violation before it was just kind of a indefinite warning system and no actual fining ability. So this business license is issued for the calendar year, starts off at a hundred and fifty dollars and then drops to a hundred dollars after June thirtieth, so about halfway through the year. And then it's also an hundred-dollar renewal. So not into it, the point isn't really to make money, but more it's just to fund the review process essentially. So there are fee exemptions for religious institutions, schools, non-for-profits, et cetera. This ordinance, along with its sister ordinance, the PUD, or excuse me, the UDO update, adding mobile food vehicle standards into our temporary use and event section, will be before you for adoption consideration at the November eleventh meeting. I personally will not be at that meeting, so hopefully Counselor McCarty can take it for me. But happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Lauren. I know you've worked very hard on this. Counselor McCarty, you have as well, would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, just kind of a brief summary. I wanna thank Lauren and as well as other members of staff that have done a wonderful job with this. It's been a true collaborative effort, and as she mentioned, this is the sister ordinance to the one that just went through APC, and will be back on November eleventh as well. So this takes care of being able to have enforcement, which I know has been an issue. And then also makes the food trucks, so to speak, have some skin in the game, gets a little bit of equal footing, and then creates a system and process that becomes clear to everyone as opposed to what it's been over the last ten years. And then also, as Lauren alluded to, staff is basically doing the background checking. And then everyone, whether you're a resident, an HOA, apartments, our city events, we're all working from the same list that hopefully will be able to further community engagement of, oh, hey, I like this food truck, I forget who they are, oh, they're on the list. You know, just being able to be regulars within the community, so.
Seeing no other discussion this evening, this is just a first reading. We look forward to, for future potential consideration and adoption. Any city council comments, Victor, APC?
Yeah, just do a brief recap from our meeting last week. On the consent agenda, we had the Midland Crossing Elementary School that'll be located there on Town Road. The HC Farms, which is located on Hinkle Road, that's a Hamilton County, new Hamilton County park. The public hearing items, we had the ordinance twenty-four fifty-seven, which is the, I'm sorry, not, it was a workshop items, I forgot to change that. So we did approve that last week, or get that a favorable recommendation to be approved possibly at November eleventh. And then ordinance twenty-four forty-five, the Clayborne Farms Phase Three, that was at workshop. Lots of discussion revolving around that. We continue to receive feedback and messages from the neighbors. So it'll be back for its second workshop meeting in November. And that was it.
Thank you. Counselor Wanniger on Audit Committee?
Yes, also, the Finance Committee today was postponed or wasn't held. We decided not to hold that meeting in anticipation of the budget being approved this evening. And then we held our Audit Committee meeting this afternoon where we received three solicitations for independent audit of the city's finances. So that'll be taken under consideration by the Audit Committee, the Clerk, Treasurer and City Staff. And then we will be coming back to the city council with a recommendation and approval in the near future or for consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? I do wanna take one. Thank you, Chris, for your patience and your dedication in a different environment. I know you have everything usually set up exactly the way you like it, but you're always very nimble at the same time, and thank you for your team to this evening. It's very important for our meetings to obviously be on live at the same time for the public to have access to them in the future as well. It is their meetings, these are public meetings obviously as well. But thank you, Chris, for your dedication, even when there's other things outside your control that happen as well. I do wanna congratulate though, again, the mayor and his team for passing a great budget as we look into the future of this, of next year. It is a budget that really focuses on a lot of things, but I'm looking forward to doing the next budget even more so than this one here today. Well, I also wanted to thank our hosts this evening, the Westfield Washington Library. As we all know, this is a fantastic building, and also you have Rivet Coffee here available. For a kid that grew up going Arlay Mount Carmel for grade school, I cannot believe they let me walk around with a coffee in my hand in a library. So I think I broke out into a rash. Mrs. Browski would've killed me at Arlay Mount Carmel if I ever attempted such a crazy thing. So, but it is a great facility, would encourage you to take your time. And also, bring your friends and family, encourage your neighbors to visit our great library as well. Mayor?
Just got a few things just for the public's FYI. First off, next week, the city and members of the council are taking off to Peachtree, Georgia to see how they do golf carts in their community. Again, just the next step and why it will be a very methodical process in evaluating expansion of golf carts in Westfield. I met with my community development team today. We are sprinting on the comprehensive plan, and you're gonna start to hear some noise about steering committees and residents who wanna participate. More to come on that. Council would love your thoughts as well about your level of participation in the steering committee. Grand Park, I set a deadline in November first, about three weeks ago. I'm a little nervous about doing that now, but I think we're close. And all signs point that we will have an agreement in principle on November first. So expect council to vote on this first meeting in December if nothing goes wrong. So I'd like to have council, they want thirty days, it's the right thing to do. Give them thirty days to look through the final agreements, and hopefully we can get to a resolution at that time. State of the city, my very first one is November twenty-first, it's sold out. But they've moved the location from what I'm hearing, there are additional seats. But if you're planning on going, you better get them if you don't already have them, 'cause I think there's not a lot left. And then lastly, and most importantly, please vote. I know lines are really, really long for early voting, that's exciting. My guess is if you join me at six a.m. on Election Day, there won't be a line. But please have your voice heard regardless of how you plan to vote. With that, I will conclude my comments.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I just wanted to say in regard to voting, we've seen this pattern. If you drive by City Hall and the line is to the corner by the cabin, that's forty-five minutes to an hour. If it's back by the barn and the trash cans, that's two hours. It has been about an hour pretty steady the entire time we've been watching it. First day was the worst day, two hours. Cool Creek's a little longer, so I suggest City Hall. But thanks for everybody getting out and voting, get out and vote.
Thank you, Marla. We need a motion to adjourn.
Real quick, before I do make a motion, I'm sorry. I was in APC mode before. I wanted to just give a shout-out to Westfield Welcome Parks Team for the Trick or Treating the Plaza event this past Friday. It's turned quickly into not just our top three, but possibly top two events in the city. The thousands of families that came out, real awesome event. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you.